To order, Sharon, can you take role, please?
Councilmember Wanger.
Here.
Councilmember Richards.
Yes.
Councilmember Hughes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Derwin.
Here.
Mayor Als.
Here.
Okay. We will start with oral communications. Anyone wishing to address the council on an item not on tonight's agenda can do so now. Are there any oral communications? Okay, not seeing, seeing none. We will move on to the consent agenda. There is one item, the minutes. Do we need to pull them or can we, can we approve them? Okay, if no one's looking to pull them, I'll take a motion.
I would move.
Is that Craig? Sorry.
Sounded like John and I'm seconding.
Okay.
Okay, moved, moved by John, seconded by Craig. We'll, we'll call it that. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wanger.
Aye.
Councilmember Richards.
Aye.
Councilmember Hughes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Derwin.
Aye.
Mayor Als.
Aye. Okay, consent agenda is approved. Our next item is a report by the town manager on COVID-19 and the town response.
Thank you, Mayor Als, members of the council. My update's actually shorter than previous updates. I think that's primarily because we're adjusting to something of a new regular and waiting to hear more about what next steps are from the state and the county. So I do want to start with the state. There was an update from Governor Newsom today that didn't have a lot of new information, but did suggest that in a few weeks, possibly in early May, depending on seeing some lower numbers, we could get a timeline for state reopening. So more to come. That's obviously very loose and no one should hang their hat on that timeline. To remind people on the meeting, the governor is utilizing six criteria to reopen state. I'd like to do this for the record if I could. One, the ability to monitor and protect our communities through testing, contact tracing, isolating, and supporting those who are positive and exposed. Number two, the ability to prevent infection in people who are at risk for more severe COVID-19. Number three, the ability of the hospital health systems to handle surges. Number four, the ability to develop therapeutics to meet the demand. Number five, the ability for businesses, schools, and childcare facilities to support physical distancing. And number six, the ability to determine when to reinstitute certain measures such as stay-at-home orders, such as the stay-at-home orders if necessary. So that is the criteria that they will be using. I have no other state updates. County update, I would like to share a screen with you, which is what we've been doing normally in these meetings is to share the dashboard. Let me do that now. Do you see the dashboard?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, it's a little small. The, not, there we go. We've seen a rise in deaths, which is most likely attributed to when they get reported than anything else. It's not a change that one would associate with new fatalities. You can also see that the number of cases as well here, 958. Again, that's, that could be as much reporting as anything else. Not much of a substantial change. One thing that I hadn't mentioned previously in calls that, again, I mean, the testing's very, very low, but it is interesting to see, at least in San Mateo County, that the testing rates indicate by age group cases in the 30 to 60 range. Obviously, as more testing comes online and antibodies information comes forward when that occurs, we'll get better information. The hospitals are in good shape. No issues with ICU or surge or ventilators at this time. Again, this is a great resource for anyone who wants to monitor on a regular basis what's happening in San Mateo County. It is worth noting that there was a news release, I believe it was yesterday, that at least in Santa Clara County, there were at least two deaths that attributed to COVID that happened earlier than we anticipated. So for the record, I wanted to enter that in. Secondly, I'd like to share again the SAMCITA page, San Mateo County Economic Development Association. This is an organization that works on business-related issues. I'd like to turn it over to Ann to share some details on a program that we're going to start sharing in the coming days for businesses. Ann?
Yeah, thank you. Hang on one second because I can't even see if I'm looking into the camera. I disappeared from the dashboard here, too. Okay, great, thanks. Yeah, I think you were, I don't know if all of us were on that call today, but Roseanne did a great job in kind of quickly running through all the features of the program. So I won't spend a lot of time on that, other than to say, what I'm going to help do here and then tomorrow morning probably is to update all of our contact list because I got a pretty significant number of changes that came out of the effort we did last week on the moratorium. And so I think we have now much better contact information to be able to reach out to all of our businesses and share with them some of these upcoming timelines relative to the possibility of some ongoing grants. Now, if you were listening carefully, and I'm sure you all were, when you, when she talked about the amount of money that would be available to any of our local businesses out of the total of 3 million, only a million's going into this program. And then it's based on population. And by my quick analysis of that, just as our population as a percentage of the county, I just rough, rough eyeballed it and said, oh, that might mean we'd have $5,000 available for one small business. So.
Maybe six.
Maybe six. So we're, it's clearly not going to be, it's not that we're looking any gift horse in the mouth, but it's not going to be a substantial enough number to make a difference to many of our tenants here. So what I think Craig and I will be doing with Jeremy this week later, Friday morning, to be exact, is to review all of the current budget updates relative to where we stand and looking forward to see what budget we might have to share. I thought the, and as I, as you probably all saw, they're obviously allowing to have self-designated funds. So if we were able to allocate whatever number it could be put towards our own tenants and, excuse me, all of our small businesses because then again, it's really a small business opportunity to potentially apply for and receive some of those grant dollars. So what we're going to look hard at is how many dollars could we safely potentially allocate? And obviously, we bring that back to this group next week in our meeting. Yeah, Jeff?
Question about that, because I've heard them mention it a couple of times. Like, I'm just thinking about, you know, I guess the, the, the features of that, the useful things about that. I guess one would just be that it's someone besides us. I mean, we don't have to sort of, somebody kind of from the outside can objectively pick businesses that they think need it.
Yep.
And the other, I guess, if it's just a cash disbursement, I guess, doesn't make a difference. I was thinking originally, maybe they were like buying certain things and maybe we were participating in some kind of, you know, group discount or enhanced buying power. But it sounds like this is more like our cash would go to the county and they would then allocate it among businesses within our jurisdiction. Just, just so that, you know, it's not, it's not, you know, us playing favorites with our favorite local business.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think that's why it's going to be important to get all the information out to all of them so that it's an even playing field to start, so that they all know exactly what the timing is, what the process is, what they'd need to do. And those were in her slides, which I'm looking at. And actually, you guys probably found it fascinating, too. I did in terms of the amount of money that's already been pledged and all of those that are considering it and then others that are doing informational presentations. I, I think we're generally pretty much ahead of the curve on much of this, especially for our size community. And I like to make sure that we're going to hopefully be somewhere in this mix by next week where we convert into, if we. And I, again, I would preface it obviously by saying, once we understand a little more clearly what we think our finances are going to be. And, and again, there's always going to be a risk associated with that since much of this is still developing over time. But I think for Portola Valley, the good news is we've always been fiscally prudent. We've always maintained relatively large reserve levels. You know, some people agree and disagree with that strategy, but clearly, this is now a time where we anticipated that if we were ever going to use something like this, this might be the right timing. So again, that will be coming back, I think, next week with more specificity. But in the meantime, we'll be reaching out to all of them, even for the very small amount that we know is available without our assistance, just so, because there will be some dollars allocated here. And so they may want to even begin that process, just so they'd be in line for that as well.
And if I can add just a few additional details and opportunities. One opportunity is if the council would like to hear directly from Roseanne Faust. She's the president and CEO of SAMCITA. She is available, so you can let me know tonight if you'd like to do that. I know there's about a half a dozen cities that are looking at having, excuse me, habitant cities that are planning or have already had Roseanne attend a meeting. Five cities have pledged so far to San Mateo County Strong. And just for the record, the cities are Burlingame, $500,000, Colma, $15,000, Greenwood City, $300,000, San Carlos, $112,500, and San Mateo, $400,000. And we're, two other cities, Atherton and Woodside, are considering some sort of contribution. The second thing I wanted to share, and Ann, if you wanted to speak a little to this, there is an opportunity for donors to pledge money, private donors to the program to support the businesses in their jurisdiction.
Yeah, and I think that's a really good point, Jeremy, because what I think we may want to also look at next week is just that, sort of a separate side campaign where we would reach out to all of our residents and any locals who obviously are interested in participating in it, who may have an affinity for some of our local businesses or just, you know, are feeling like they would really like to make a contribution. So there's no question we could open it up beyond where we would potentially offer our dollars initially. Yeah, Craig?
Yeah, and I think specifically for people who don't necessarily have an affinity for any particular local business and they don't want to say, you know, make a donation or they wouldn't even know how necessarily to make a donation to any individual particular business. But if they wanted to donate to this fund, that's a way of supporting all of the businesses or at least a large number potentially in kind of a, you know, equal fair way without having to pick favorites. Kind of the same thing that we would be trying to do with, with whatever money the town, you know, pound dollars we put in.
Jeremy, do you know if there have been any of these opened in other communities? Meaning, community-based fund, donation funds?
I'm not aware specifically of one, but I would imagine, yes, that that's occurred. Tomorrow, I'm on a call with my counterparts. I will ask the question to see if that's happened.
Okay. And the second question I had for you is if you had any idea of what Woodside and Atherton might be considering in terms of a dollar amount?
No, they haven't indicated to me specifics.
Okay. If we get that information, it'd be very hopeful.
No problem. So to continue with my COVID update, the, I move to town updates. The first is that the committees are starting to schedule additional meetings. I believe Conservation is looking at a meeting next week. And we're anticipating additional committees to come back online using Zoom. Sharon is going to be the master of scheduling those things. Thank you, Sharon, for your help on that. The committees' chairs have been contacted and we're asking them to consider reprioritization of, of the items that are most important to them, projects that are most important to them in light of the impact fiscally on, on our budget. And we're obviously looking forward to any annual reports from them on the work that they did prior to COVID. We have returned the electronic signs that were at the edge of town and replaced them with large construction road signs. There's also two signs now on Willowbrook indicating the same messaging that we had earlier. We've developed a very close relationship with a few residents on Willowbrook. I won't embarrass them by calling them out by name, but I want to thank them for being a touchpoint for staff on Willowbrook, excuse me, Willowbrook parking issues and letting us know how things have been on a daily basis. It's been really, really valuable, so thank you to them. I'd like to give an update on our budget process. Last week, I presented the council with some thoughts that staff had related to what a 2021 budget would look like. We have actually shifted course on the recommendation from the subcommittee working on COVID finance issues. That's Ann and Craig. Our plan is to bring to council a 2021 budget utilizing the numbers in the current year's budget, the 1920 budget. Our, the process we were examining previously required quite a bit of work to develop what would be a stripped-down provisional budget based on a number of assumptions that probably be incorrect and we were going to change it anyway. So we thought that this made a lot more sense, given that we would be able to spend staff resources on, I think, the important questions on what a budget may look like, collaborating with our, our neighbors and understanding what they're seeing and thinking about and the like. So thank you to the subcommittee for working with us on that. And then what that means is in July through September, we'll be implementing our normal budget process just in that timeframe for quarter one budget adoption by September 30th. An update on reactivation, and I want to put a big caveat on this one. This does not mean that we're reactivating Town Hall activities that have been suspended or changed many times soon, but we do want to start the effort to put in place because there's a lot of questions to be answered. This item and the previous item are going to be brought to the council next Wednesday at their special meeting. We look forward to the conversation because we want to understand from you what your expectations are on Town Hall being open. What does that look like? We have a number of potential recommendations, but also a series of questions to ask the council about what this could look like. This is everything from what the, what the reception area at Town Hall could look like to facility rentals and the like. We will be focusing on the higher-level goals related to reactivation, and that will help design anything underneath it. So we look forward to presenting more to you. I had a number of conversations with staff today. I have one scheduled for tomorrow. And as I said, we look forward to this because we're eager to get back to whatever normal is as quickly as we can while still maintaining the safety of everyone who comes to visit us. And it may not be that we can open up everything as quickly as we want. It might continue to be virtual and the like. That'll be a conversation for next week. Just a general message, you know, one of the things that shifted, I think, a bit for us in the last week or so is as we move further and further down this shelter-in-place road, there's a lot of energy and anticipation about moving beyond that. And I think that's resulted in spending some time talking with and reacting to what we see as seen as violations to the shelter-in-place order. The, it, it does take some staff time when we are made aware of those violations and working with, if they reach that level, working with the sheriff's office to, to reach out to people who are potentially doing that. I don't believe this is a significant problem for the vast majority of residents in Portola Valley. And I think we certainly understand that we're all cooped up and that, that energy can be frustrating at times. But it has been, I think, a challenging week on, on some fronts for staff, just making sure that people are following the guidelines in very specific situations, I think particularly in the use of, of related gatherings and the like. Next week, you'll, you've been hearing from me on this a couple of weeks now, but next week you will see some opportunities to do some building project submissions electronically. So we're excited about that. There's even more coming out of the planning department, planning and building department on that front. But we've reached a point where we're feeling pretty comfortable about it. And kudos to Laura and her team for spending a lot of time thinking through all of the issues related to that. Two final items that I have in my update. You will see in Jeff's message and a separate message, and kudos to Kerry Chin on coming up with the idea. It is Earth Day and we wanted to engage residents in an art challenge. People who would, we want people to be creative and design representations of what Earth Day means to them. So we'll be putting that out and look forward to seeing what people think of that. And then finally, as more and more people are interested in pulling broom on their properties, we are looking to actually place dumpsters in certain parts of town where people can dump the broom. So I think we'll probably do one up in the Highlands first. And I've been reaching out to Judy Murphy's, the chair of the Conservation Committee, and she's obviously supportive. It was great to get her support. So more on that front. That's my update. As I said, it's much shorter today. I think we're in this middle period where we're in the new normal, waiting for new direction from the state and the county, which, you know, hopefully come in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy.
And I'm happy to take any questions, I'm sorry.
Yes, are there, are there questions from the council on Jeremy's report? Okay, I do not see any. David, did you have any questions on or comments on Jeremy's report? It's okay to just, just, I'll, I'll, I'll move on in a second here if you don't want to, it's okay. Okay, I don't see David's hand up. Okay, good to see you tonight, by the way, David, thanks. Okay, that brings us to item, sorry, I have to scroll back and forth. Now, item, are we on, I'm three? It's the council priorities discussion.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
So we wanted to bring this item back. Normally, the council would have adopted council priorities a little earlier this month as part of the annual budget process. We did not want to simply put this on the shelf, but we did want to bring back a status update on, on that process and how it ties into what we'll be doing with the budget next year. So this is on red page 15 on. The council, in its conversations in February 26, indicated an interest in ultimately four council priorities. I think we got them correct in order of import related to resident resiliency, town committees, excuse me, resident resiliency, housing strategic plan implementation, open space stewardship, and sustainability issues. So this is what we would normally be bringing to you for a final review and be using as part of our budget process. But because things are different, our, we wanted to present what we believe was captured correctly and also indicate that there are likely going to be significant additions or changes to this when we go into the budget process in, in July that are related to those items that we have not been able to complete this year due to the COVID-19 situation. So red page 17, you can see, going to 18, you can see bullets on a number of items that have been delayed either partially through their implementation or have not occurred at all. Just to give some examples, general plan update, the pedestrian safety plan implementation, climate action plan, and the like. So what we, what the staff is recommending is that the council accept this report and that we put it aside and bring it back early in the budget process next fiscal year for re-review based on the best information that we have about the financial situation of the town. And then that would help us construct a draft budget for the council's adoption in September. In conjunction with this process, I don't mention it specifically within my report, there's an engagement with the committees as well that is vital to our budget work that will take place at the same time. And that's why getting the committees to start meeting again at this point is, is useful. So that's my report. And again, my recommendation is to accept the report. Happy to, if there's any changes that I need to make to the priorities as we drafted them, happy to do that now, but that could certainly wait till July as well. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jeremy. I'll just, just to start, you know, we've had a couple of, I mean, we've, you know, Jeremy and Mary Ann and I have been talking about this for a little bit. And we sort of, you know, it was kind of, it's a strange situation we're in, right? And so I think what we finally arrived at was we would look at this and treat it as sort of a draft of something that we all realized got just, just, you know, pretty much knocked sideways by everything in the past two months. But that it's kind of, you know, we, I think, and, and correct me if I get on this wrong, I, I think we felt like this is, it was an important, you know, set of discussions that we had before. We wanted to keep this at least as a placeholder just so when we're ready to come back to some kind of normal, we'd kind of know where to begin. And obviously, you know, any priorities we adopt for the rest of the year, especially when the fiscal year turns over, will have to reflect everything that's happening right this moment. But we thought it was important, you know, especially things like the fire and resiliency are not going away, even if we have to deal with COVID the rest of the year. So it's a strange situation we're in. You know, it's a, it's kind of strange to be maybe attending to this kind of business now, but we felt like it was important to just remember what we had discussed so far and keep it around with the understanding it was going to change dramatically in the next, you know, as, as things move forward, so. Craig had his hand up, go ahead and.
My question or comment was just around staff performance evaluations and how that ties in with this. You know, especially for Jeremy, for the town manager, our annual reviews of performance are not directly linked to these priorities, but that's often a sort of major component of what we talk about is how effective he's been at implementing the priorities. And, and given that we're going to be doing this kind of shifting, just wanted to ask Jeremy if you've given any thought to whether there would be any impact on that review process and how we, and how we might think about handling that review process if, if, you know, the priorities that we set before this whole thing happened are not necessarily as big of a part of what staff's actually been working on for the year.
Yeah, thank you, through the chair. I have given it some thought. The, we had actually originally scheduled my performance evaluation for, I believe it was March, and held off on that for obvious reasons. The, I mean, I think it, it does present a different calculus for judging my performance, certainly, because much of what we'd hope to accomplish isn't going to be accomplished this year due to these circumstances. The, I am, I am entirely comfortable holding off on, on that, on my performance evaluation for, for a number of reasons. But I think the big one is just because we're in a tenuous financial situation and I just want to make sure that we're not even having any conversations around salary issues or otherwise, in any way, shape, or form, I don't think it's appropriate at this time until we get some sense of where, you know, the budget situation is. Is it, you know, relates to, if I'm reading in between the lines in your question, is it relates to how to do that? I'm not sure that I have a particular answer. That's the evaluation. I don't have an answer tonight, other than continuing to engage with the mayor who is responsible for that process. Thank you.
And we, you know, we have, we have a closed session on our, our first May, May meeting, I think, on the roll forward. I'm not, I don't have it in front of me, but we had a closed session scheduled. I, I thought for this, you know, for this past year, it's probably worth it to, to stay on top of the schedule as best we can at this point and still have our discussion about it. But thinking about, you know, the year to come, that's a, it's a good question. I, you know, I, I don't, off the top of my head, I don't have an answer for it. It's probably something we should discuss, maybe, maybe if I. I think it makes sense to stick with this, this closed session coming up for both the town manager and town attorney reviews. And, and whatever we, you know, the various, we could decide on that.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree that for the, for the year past, you know, a fairly small percentage of it, I guess, has been this coronavirus thing, which really kind of only kicked things out joint late February, early March. But yeah, for the coming year, you know, in terms of goal setting and expectation setting and thinking about how to, you know, essentially help manage the, the managers and figure out what we want to do when we, when we have so much uncertainty, it's going to be very hard to do that. So just wanted to put it out there to have everybody start thinking about, because it's going to be an interesting challenge.
Yes, no question. Other, other questions from the council? And then I can ask for public comment and then we can, we can sort of discuss to finish. Okay, I don't see any other questions. So is there any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none. Ann, do you want to start a self on a discussion of this? Go ahead.
Yeah, and I appreciate the work you guys did and sort of looking at it. Yeah, and I appreciate the work you guys did and sort of looking at it and stepping back to say, actually, I was nostalgic when I read our priorities.
I hear you.
And, and, you know, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to reintroduce some of them in some form. But clearly we're not in anything resembling a normal environment right now. So I think this approach is the right one until we at least begin to try and rejigger our budget to align it and hear from the committees based on their potential changes and what budget we may have available for them and, you know, availability for them to even do their work, depending on which committee they are. I think we all know that to the extent we can, our original list was pretty good. I mean, I think it actually fit very well with where we were headed and we'll continue to move as much as we can in those directions with clearly the fire prevention being at the top of the list since, as you suggest, that's not going away. And it could be a very bad fire year. So that's going to stay there as, as hopefully will some of the other priorities. But until we have a much better idea of what's going to happen budget wise, I think it's, it's realistic to tie the two back together. So to delay it until September. So thank you for the work on thinking that through.
Okay, John, you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I agree with Ann. I think that it's a good analysis of where we are. There's just too many unknowns and probably some room for some new questions. Then get into the, into what our priorities are going to be. I have to, I hated to see the leaf blow at the top of the things that isn't going to happen. But I think it's the right approach, so.
That wasn't intentional, John.
Yeah.
That wasn't intentional.
It's good news that it's illegal for other reasons right now, so.
We did manage to get two in, so that was good before we closed.
So when we get around to your evaluation, we'll take that into account.
Okay. John, were you done? Okay, Craig, you're up.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think, you know, taking it as, as we better understand things is the right approach. And so this essentially recognizes the reality that we're in. And yeah, like Ann, I also look back on this long for simpler times. But I think this is the right approach to take.
Okay, Mary Ann.
I really don't have anything to add. I think you did a very good job, Jeff, of capturing what we talked about. What we wanted to do to make sure that we didn't forget these priorities, even though they may not be priorities for a few years. And maybe our number one priority will be try to stay alive. But for now, I think this is what we should do.
Always an unspoken priority, but yeah, I agree. I agree. Okay, um, yeah, I, I kind of, I explained where we were coming from, our thinking originally, so I don't have anything to add. I think we're all on the same page. I could, we are being asked to accept this report and I'll take a motion if someone's willing to make one.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Ann, seconded by Craig. All in favor? Roll call vote, sorry.
You're muted, Sharon.
My apologies. Councilmember Wenger.
Aye.
Councilmember Richards.
Aye.
Councilmember Hughes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Derwin.
Aye.
Mayor Als.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you all. Next up will be item four is liaison reports. Ann, do you have anything to report?
No, nothing other than the, some of the meetings we participated on and we're on a rotating basis. So I don't think we're reporting on those, but no other committee meetings or regional meetings.
Okay, John.
No, none to report.
Craig?
Nothing.
What do you, Mary Ann?
No.
Really? Wow, that's okay.
I know. I think it's the first time ever.
That's COVID.
It's rare. Yeah, yeah. I don't think I have anything. I've had a few, I mean, just, I've had kind of the same conversations you're all having with some of our local partners, but nothing. I don't think there's anything big to report out of any of those, so I don't think I have anything either. That brings us to Jeremy, town manager report.
I only have one thing. It's just a thank you to Palo Alto University. They provided us with some mental health and wellness resources that they had been working on that I don't know that they're up yet on the parks and virtual parks and rec page, but we do plan on getting those up soon. If I can share the screen here and show you what it looks like. Do you see a mental health and wellness resources? Oh, not yet. There you go. Can you see it now?
Yeah.
Yes. There's podcasts, training opportunities, wellness resources and other research and then connections to professional resources. I'm also, as I've been talking with their president, they have a number of grad students who aren't able to do some of the normal work right now that they would typically be doing. And the president is working with her staff to see if those graduate students could be available to be a resource to residents of the Sequoias and also parents who have kids at home and dealing with the challenges during this time. So we hope to have more to say about that, but I really appreciate the creative thinking that came out of Palo Alto University on this.
Yeah, no, that was a great, that was very cool of them to offer that. So I was excited. Ann, go ahead.
Just a quick follow-up, excuse me, Jeremy, to see if you could give us a brief update on Blue Oaks.
Yes. So we just, for the record, we were contacted by a number of residents related to a fairly visible vegetation management program or work off of Redberry. The town has had staff visit the site a couple of different times. And we are, we sent a letter late today to Blue Oaks, asking them questions about what, about their plan, program, what happened up there. It's part of our initial formal due diligence to determine what's occurred. So there's a process by which that they will gather that information. A priority for us is just ensuring that erosion control occurs if that is needed. So Howard and his team are working closely with Blue Oaks on that right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions about Jeremy's report? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to the digest. Any thing? Bear with me, I might have to scroll through this. Anything anyone wants to pull on this week's digest? I basically, I, number four, I told, I told Wayne I'd be happy to sign as just an individual on the letter, like his phrases in xenophobia. I don't know if he reached out to anyone else about that one. Anything else on the digest? Okay, that being the case, we are done.
Jeff, can I make just a quick comment? I just wanted to acknowledge if you read today's almanac, there was a guest opinion from the mayor and his role as the chair of PCE and supervisor Dave Pine on 50th anniversary of Earth Day and climate change. So just wanted to acknowledge that that was in the paper today.
Thank you. Yes, yeah. Oh, that was fast. Weekly council meetings. Okay, that's, that was, who knew? That was a secret all along. All right. Okay, I guess we can't talk anymore. Agenda.
Yep. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Take care, everybody.
Be well.
You too.